Good. Welcome everyone to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of Springfield Township. Today's date is February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Happy Valentine's Day, all the lovebirds. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building and is also being offered in a live streaming feature. Meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for submitting public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, did we receive any public comment?
No public comments were received.
Thank you. At this time, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment. Silent reflection. Honor the servicemen and women placed their themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minutebook of the township.
I'll make that motion.
Your motion is there a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote. Okay, Commissioner Ratzavong is not with us this evening, otherwise all our commissioners are here. Andy Fremeth is here, subbing for Jim Garrity as our solicitor. And I would also like to note the presence of State Representative Nelson. Thank you for being here. And the dog. I'd like to also announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four workshop meeting to discuss two personnel matters and two litigation matters. And in a moment, I am going to invite Representative Napoleon Nelson to the front of the room. He is here to present a three thousand dollar check that will help offset the cost of acquiring two point seven six acres of open space on Hawes Lane in Erdenheim. The grant is from the Pennsylvania Department of Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnership Program. And I would also note, we also received a grant from the Montgomery County Montco two thousand and forty grant program, the amount of two hundred thousand, so sizable assistance in helping preserve that open space. So I would like to invite Napoleon Nelson to join us further room. You go down, let's go down.
You too.
Let me work with what you said three thousand, but it is three hundred thousand.
Say, I mean, I'm praying for you.
I meant how much the township pays.
Yeah.
It's really exciting.
I've seen bigger acts than the small right.
You wanted to, you must have seen my face.
I was like, wait.
We're gonna celebrate everything.
Very long, I mean, that would check off.
Yeah. You thought the check was gonna be bigger.
What, boy, what, you, you bring a check, you're not that big, not that big.
I'm smiling.
They got it.
You got it, not that big. Congratulations.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
You guys want to do one?
I'm here.
Let's do one, let's see our experience.
Thanks, sir.
Just wanna be the twenty-one.
Relax a little bit.
I don't know if I got script going.
Okay.
Okay. Put your hand on the chair.
That's great.
If we need anything, it's just that whatsoever, please, um, well. May very well.
Right now, sorry, I'm trying to get this sealed and everybody on that.
Yeah, people have to take it to their own photos.
Right.
We'll be able to license a reach.
Yeah. I could do everything else except take pictures.
I just figured since everybody was watching along online, they just put in Robles hat. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for supporting us.
Thank you.
We're old always.
Thank you for sending the two for us.
Thank you.
It's you.
Oh, so that's one of them.
All right.
It went on display. There you go. Put it anywhere.
Indoors.
Yes. Perfect. Did you want to say anything?
We had Pat and Gil just having a little backseat bar. Thanks.
All right. Thank you again for being here and your support. Thank you. The Board of Commissioners would also like to acknowledge the actions of the men and women, volunteers of the Flower Town, Orland, and Windmore Fire Companies who responded to a significant house fire, the Stoudsbury Townhome Development, in the early morning hours of January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. The emergency was initially reported to nine-one-one dispatchers as a medical call at approximately two oh nine a.m. The first police and ambulance personnel were on site within minutes. Those individuals quickly upgraded the call to a building fire upon observing smoke rising from the roof. Working in extreme weather conditions, firefighters were able to contain the fire to one dwelling unit. Tragically, however, one member of the Springfield Township community lost her life. The fire response is an excellent example of emergency management, planning, and teamwork among the police, fire, and emergency medical personnel who protect and serve the township every day. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I would like to thank them for their efforts. I would also like to remind residents that a smoke detector should be installed on each level of your home, and that smoke detectors should be tested at least twice per year. Residents should also have a plan of action in the event of fire and practice that plan regularly. For more safety tips, please contact the Springfield Township Fire Marshal at two one five eight three six seventy-six hundred, extension one 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 one. And of course, that contact information can be found on the township website. The board has now opened the comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. To conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Okay, we will now go to our committee reports. And I will start as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee. Now, this first item is regarding police promotions in the township. I move that the Board of Commissioners promote Police Corporal Christopher Calhoun to the rank of Police Sergeant, and Officer Calvin Wiley to the rank of Corporal effective February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Both individuals were evaluated through a written examination and oral interview conducted by Safe City Solutions LLC and received outstanding performance evaluations from their superiors. The two promotions will fill vacancies created by the retirement Sergeant Bruce Nisbet later this month. Board of Commissioners will be conducting a ceremonial swearing-in for Sergeant Calhoun and Corporal Wiley and will acknowledge Sergeant Nisbet's thirty-three years of service to Springfield Township via a resolution at its March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. That is my motion.
Second.
We have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote. And that concludes my report. I will now go to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three resolutions and letter authorization. My first resolution is number sixteen twenty-nine, land development, eighteen fifty-one Bethlehem Pike. I move the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution sixteen twenty-nine, a resolution granting a waiver to the land development reprocess to permit the owner of the property located at eighteen fifty-one Bethlehem Pike Flower Town. To repurpose an existing twenty-six hundred and fifty-five square foot building, most recently used as a bank, for a new Starbucks coffee shop. As part of the redevelopment of the property, the drive-through canopy at the rear of the building will be removed, and a new trash closure will be constructed in its place. In addition, a new drive-through window will be placed on the south side of the building, along with an outdoor seating area and landscaping. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Questions or comments?
Uh, come, uh, we're just trying to manage. Just for anyone just tuning in this evening, uh, we wave a, uh, the pen, uh, for, what is that?
Um, it, it basically expedites the redevelopment process, and in this particular case, it follows very closely the land development review period in that the individual had to meet with the planning commission that were reviewed by the township engineer. Plans will be recorded, and escrow will be established, guarantee the public improvements. And in this particular development, they also had to appear in front of the zoning hearing board for floodplain encroachment, which ironically actually creates more, um, grass area than impervious area, but it still follows all the regular, um, review processes, but it's just tends to be a little bit more expedited.
And then I bring out again, just, you can keep tuning in now, um, concerns, being fast tracked just to get it done. Uh, so we have discussed the past, the primary concern I have in that particular area is regarding traffic.
Sorry for that. Start from the beginning.
Uh, as regarding traffic, um, anyone who goes through that area during the morning knows that, um, you know, traffic can get backed up on Bethlehem Pike, uh, turning into Dunkin' Donuts. Um, and so my concern is just now the addition of another, um, coffee spot would just exacerbate that traffic issue. So, uh, but I think some of that led to the extension of the drive-through into the floodplain or, you know, a little bit further back. So, you know, some of that's going to address, but mostly I just wanted that clarification out there. So if anyone was tuning in for the first time, this is, it meant to expedite the process, but not eliminate what they have to go through to do it correctly.
Hey, people should know that that, um, exact question was discussed Monday. Someone had brought it up, that the, our engineer and their representatives addressed that to our satisfaction. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
The second resolution, Mr. President, is number sixteen thirty, subdivision slash lot line change fifteen hundred fifteen oh six Willow Grove Avenue. I move the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution sixteen thirty, a resolution granting preliminary slash final subdivision approval for the properties located at fifteen hundred and fifteen oh six Willow Grove Avenue, Windmore. The subdivision will result in the transfer of approximately ten thousand five hundred and thirty-five square feet of land from the southwest corner of the property at fifteen oh six Willow Grove Avenue to the rear of the property located at fifteen hundred Willow Grove Avenue. No new construction is proposed, and the new lot line configuration will yield two similarly sized rectangular shaped lots. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
My third resolution, Mr. President, is I move that the Board of Commissioners accept a letter of resignation dated February the ninth, twenty twenty-four, from Gerald Rath Esquire. Okay, on behalf of the owners of the real property located at forty forty-two Grove Avenue, Flower Town, extending the ninety-day subdivision and land development plan to review for review period through March fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. The subject of the application is a lot line adjustment that proposes to transfer twenty-nine, third, two thousand nine hundred and thirty-six square feet of land from the property at forty-two Grove Avenue to the property at forty Grove Avenue. The extension of time will allow the applicant the opportunity to revise their plans in order to comply with the Springfield Township Code. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
My next resolution and final resolution is I move the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated January the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, from Christopher Canavan on behalf of Leckerus, Leckerus Acquisitions LP, extending the ninety-day subdivision and land development plan review period without limitation of time. The subject of the land development application is the construction of sixteen townhouses on two point oh three acres of land at four oh two Hawes Lane, Erdenheim. The extension of land will allow the applicant the opportunity to revise their plans in order to comply with the Springfield Township Code. That's my resolution.
Uh, we have a motion. Add some, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
Okay, and my last action, Mr. President, is I move the Board of Commissioners reappoint Jeffrey T. Harbison to a new four-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Township Planning Commission. Mr. Harbison's new term of service shall expire February the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-eight.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
Okay, that concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Now go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first regarding the bill listing, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the January check reconciliation in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-four cents, and the February bill listing in the amount of six hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. That's my motion.
Hey, the motion. Is there a second? Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
All right. Next, uh, it is my distinct privilege and honor, in accordance with section thirteen oh two, A, A, subsection B of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of an employment agreement with a Michael Taylor Township manager, sending forth the terms and conditions of employment. As required by the code, the term of the agreement shall expire on the date of the Board of Commissioners organizational meeting following the next municipal election. Basically, the agreement must be reauthorized every two years. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just, I'll say a quick comment. I think, um, again, as I said, this is a distinct honor to be able to, uh, make this motion, um, and vote for it tonight. But one thing that I think separates our township from a lot of, uh, the Shrining Townships is the continuity that we do have, um, in the, uh, in the township management. Um, and Mike Taylor sits at the top of that continuity. Um, and it really does, um, enable us to do what we do. So, uh, what he makes us look all well, um, on a daily basis, but it enables us to, uh, you know, do what I think we all agree makes Springfield such a great place to live. So, thank you, Mike, for your continued service to the township.
Thank you.
Great. Wilson, agreed. Any other comments or questions?
If I could say one thing, um, that continuity is because of boards like this that see that as valuable to the community and, uh, make it a point to do that. So you should be commended as well.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, we have, uh, we had a motion, we had a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
Great. Uh, next, regarding the zoning hearing board, uh, meeting for the month of February, uh, the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board will meet on Monday, February twenty-sixth, at seven P M., uh, in this room at the Springfield Township Building, where they will hear the following, uh, two applications, first being from Holy Martyrs Roman Catholic Church, owner, owners of the property located at two oh seven Ulmer Avenue in Orland. Um, the applicant are seeking a variance, uh, Springfield Township zoning code to seek approval to use the vacant convent as a daycare preschool space. In addition, the applicants are seeking approval to install a ground-mounted sign not to exceed twenty-five square feet. That property is zoned within the B Residential District of Ward Three of Springfield Township. Um, and the second application is for a Marissa case, owner of the property located at four twelve Ascot Road in Orland. Um, that applicant is requesting a variance, uh, to allow for the addition to be, to allow for an addition to be constructed to the rear of the home that is within the limits of the floodplain as defined by FEMA. The proposed addition, although in a different configuration, replaces a structure that was damaged by a fallen tree. The proposed addition is also nine feet further away from the water course. That property is owned within the A Residential District of Ward Three of Springfield Township. And again, those two applications will be heard on Monday evening, February twenty-sixth at seven P M. And that should conclude my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. Uh, we will now go to Commissioner Morris, who is standing in for, uh, the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner, Commissioner Ratzavong, who is not here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Commissioner Ratzavong, I'd like to move that Board of Commissioners authorize the perfect township provision to act due land use agreements for the Springfield building, baseball, softball installation for the use of best possible building. You set forth the obligation of four presentation with respect to the weakness, maintenance obligation, land improvement, parking, and control of funds. This number of both agreements is January one, from four through September the third of November.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
By the way, an announcement. Uh, on December first, one of the three technical township received proposals from eleven architects, the friends of the foundation, who have been proposal that was issued on October, within October, the proposal were reviewed by the Recreation Center Advisor Committee in public after December seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, following which five firms were invited to interview with the committee and worked in the continuing working. The committee continued the evaluation of the project on November one, two thousand and twenty-four, and had recommended two firms to order permission of implementation. The two votes under consideration were received from MKSB Architects, Alan Coste, and Crenwell Borget Architects, and Sully, Crenwell Borget Architects, and Sully, uh, Blue Bell, and Board of Commissioners made a thorough panel of works to one of the, one of the two firms, uh, after March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And, uh, finally, I moved that Board of Commissioners appoint Chris Hopkins, Bert Ryan, uh, and Jillian Gallow, Windmore, as members of the Recreation Center Advisor Committee, personally the committee's assistant, Board of Commissioners, the Recreation Center Director, for the future use relation to the director's center, and provide technical, technical advice and representation. The Recreation Center Advisors will be from the first Thursday every month at six P M. The three libraries are at the council. All instances of evidence are in the coverage.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Any questions or comments? Well, I'll make a quick comment, because I feel like Commissioner Ratzavong might say this here, uh, but we continue to see and be oppressed with, uh, the talented people of our township who step forward and serve in volunteer and advisory roles, and these two candidates are no different. I'm part of this committee as well. They, they both came to the last meeting, contribute, um, and bring a lot to the table, even though the committee's been going on for a while. It's gonna go on for a little longer. Uh, just really happy that, that we have so many people like this and for these two to join and volunteer. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote. That if we're Commissioner Ratzavong.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. We will now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. I begin with the recycling report. During the month of January two thousand and twenty-four, Springfield Township residents recycled two hundred eight point seven tons of material with a household or participation rate of seventy-three percent. And that cost for the month was twenty-one thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents. Next, uh, leaf, leaf waste collection. Due to the relatively mild winter weather conditions and an increase in material observed for collection, Springfield Township's residential curbside leaf waste collection resumed Monday, February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and will run through mid-December. Leaf waste includes leaves, garden residue, shrubbery, tree trimmings, and similar material, material. It does not include trash, bamboo, landscape timbers, logs, or grass clippings. Please place all leaf waste materials in biodegradable paper bags or bundles and place them at the curb for collection on your regular collection day. Uh, then with the Environmental Advisory Commission, the email dated December first, two thousand and twenty-three, Desiree Ramon indicated that she has found it necessary to resign her position as a member of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. The Board of Commissioners thanks Ms. Ramon for dedicating your time and talents to the Springfield Township community. As a result of Ms. Ramon's resignation, there exists a vacancy as a member of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. Springfield Township residents who are interested in serving as a member of the commission are encouraged to send a letter of interest or resume to the attention of Mike Taylor, Township Manager at fifteen ten Paper Mill Road, Windmore, PA, one nine zero three eight, or email mike at m taylor at springfieldmontco.org. And then, lastly, I have Resolution number sixteen thirty-one, Whisack and Creek Water Quality Improvement Plan. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number one six three one, a resolution endorsing the creation of a municipal consortium to assist with the implementation of the Whisack and Creek Water Quality Improvement Plan. Since two thousand and sixteen, the municipalities and wastewater treatment plants located in the Whisack and Creek watershed have been working together as an informal group to prepare the Water Quality Improvement Plan as an alternative to the phosphorus-based plan created by the United States EPA. The consortium will include a designated representative and a, and an alternate from each municipality. That is my resolution.
Uh, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just have one, just general comment. I've been serving, uh, as the township's representative for, since the beginning of the, uh, the, uh, the group. Uh, and the, the group has done an immense amount of really good work. It's taken an awful long time because there's been an awful lot of, uh, uh, requirement studies that were undertaken to truly try and understand the greater problems of the creek, and the, and the creek does have a lot of problems. Uh, and to draft this, uh, the, uh, Water Quality Improvement Plan, uh, which is very extensive and, and is being submitted to, uh, to D E P, uh, and the EPA for their review and approval. Uh, the requirement that we're talking about approving tonight is, uh, a resolution to formalize the process that the, that, as to how the individual municipalities and water treatment plants will work together to solve the problem and, and present the, present this solution to the D E P and the EPA. So that's, that's the general background of this. We, we, we looked at, uh, So that's, that's the general background of this. We, we, we looked at, uh, a, a number of other, uh, possibilities. Uh, the the other one that was given serious consideration in my mind was creating an authority which would have, uh, uh, had, uh, its own standalone pow, powers with, with regard to the administration of the creek. And, uh, uh, the body in large, uh, decided that the, uh, the best way to implement it was through this continued consortium, uh, format. So that's just by way of background.
Great. Thank you, Peter, for all your work on that, too. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
All right, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner May. We will now go to the Chairwoman of the Public Works Facilities Committee, Commissioner McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are four items this evening. The first is regarding the bid for the Walnut Avenue Pedestrian Trail Phase One. On Thursday, February ninth, twenty twenty-four, Springfield Township received bids from six contractors for the construction of the Walnut Avenue Pedestrian Trail Phase One. The base bids ranged in price from three hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-five cents to six hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, with alternates ranging in price from a deduction of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four to fifty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. The lowest combined bid, base plus alternate, was received from Flymar Construction Company. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners awards the contract to Flymar Construction Company Incorporated of Pennsylvania, with a combined low bid of three hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars. Phase one of the trail will be located on the west side of Walnut Avenue from its intersection with Orland Mill Road to Shady Brown Park.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Quick comment, or quick question, actually. When would we, uh, anticipate it, uh, construction begin?
Well, we made a commitment to this, uh, country club that we would have the bulk of the activities completed by April fifteenth, so almost immediately, depending upon the, uh, weather conditions and the contractors' availability to get started.
It's great. Very exciting. It's been a long time coming.
Mr. President, Flymar was the group that did the, uh, Mermaid Lane Park, uh, improvements also. So they're well-known to the township and what well, and they do generally very good work, so.
Great.
Very good work.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
The second item is Resolution number sixteen thirty-two, the Walnut Avenue Pedestrian Trail Phase Two. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number sixteen thirty-two, Resolution authorizing an application to the Monco twenty forty implementation grant program for the Walnut Avenue Trail Phase Two. The proposed trail will connect Sandy Run Park with the Isaac Preserve and together will create one point one five miles of trail spanning Springfield and Upper Dublin Townships.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Do we have a, do we have a dollar amount we're requesting, or is it, is it, is it an open request?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the maximum amount
Okay.
you can be awarded, and that's what we're going to request.
Okay.
What's the, what's the estimated cost of the?
Uh, it's about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, and we have forty-four thousand dollars that has been awarded in, uh, Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program, State.
And would that count towards our match if needed?
Could. We're still gonna be short a little bit, but there's actually no match requirement for the Monco twenty forty.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
The third item is the sale of used equipment. Section fifteen oh one point two of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code sets forth the regulations for the sale of township personal property via electronic auction. The Springfield Township Fleet Supervisor has requested permission to sell two used pickup trucks and two pieces of used equipment via electronic auction. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the sale of following vehicle and equipment via the, via the municipal online public auction site. It's a twenty thirteen Chevrolet Silverado, twenty-five hundred pickup truck, a two thousand eight Chevrolet Silverado, fifteen hundred pickup truck, nineteen ninety-nine Simplicity Snowblower, and a nineteen eighty-five O T C air-assisted throttle.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
The final item is the Integrity Avenue Flood Mitigation Project. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate officials to execute stormwater easement and payment agreements with Mary Ellen Flynn, Marita and Regina Crane, and Paul Zeigler to facilitate the construction of a stormwater detention basin on portions of three properties located in the three hundred block of Integrity Avenue in Orland. The agreements grant the township temporary construction and permanent drainage easements and set forth the conditions under which the stormwater improvements are to be constructed and maintained. In addition, I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of bids for the construction of the Integrity Avenue Flood Mitigation Project.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Quick comment, um. This is sort of, this is the, uh, the culmination of a multi-year, um, planning project, uh, particularly with the neighbors, uh, who came to agreement, um, on the easement. Um, and so I wanted to just publicly thank, uh, those three neighbors that, that were referenced before. Um, but again, I think this just highlights, this is the, the second, um, this will be the second completed project, at least in Ward Six, uh, that mitigates, uh, areas of historical, um, challenges with stormwater, uh, developing. And it first was on Burton Road. Um, and even with the recent heavy rain that we had, um, the neighbors along that area have expressed, um, what a dramatic change it's been, um, since the stormwater basin was, was put in uh, along Burton on Sandy Run Golf Club. Um, and so I think this, this just highlights the township's commitment to dealing with issues of stormwater management. Um, these are multi-year projects and the two require, uh, the cooperation and the participation of, of neighbors. And as in this case, um, you know, we have three neighbors that were able to come to agreement on the easement. So, again, I just want to publicly thank them and, um, really highlight the success that the township has shown as, as trying to to deal with, um, sort of the legacy issue of stormwater management in the township. So, um, just another good project with township.
Great. Well said. And that project in specific, and I think this one too, both have ARPA funds tied to it.
That's correct. They're both ARPA-funded.
So, obviously that came out of, uh, pandemic. And you sort of hear the abstract spending of the federal government. Well, I mean, this is where the rubber meets the road. You know, with that, with that program, we're beneficiary of, make some real improvements, as you know.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a six-zero vote.
That concludes my report this evening. Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner McNamara. We'll now go to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Morris.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. At this time, I will, uh, the board is once again open to receiving public comment. Okay, hearing none. Uh, I will accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or hoots and howls? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote, and we are adjourned.
We go.